All right, hello everyone. Welcome to the 2024 Chicago Full Moon Jam Town Hall. We are hosting over Discord and live streaming over Twitch. And we have our Board of Directors here slash Event Leads to go over the history of the jam, the growth over the years, basically recap what we did last year, review our budget from last year as well as our upcoming year, and all of the exciting things we have planned for 2024. I think it would be good for us to start with introducing ourselves and giving a brief recap of how we got involved with the jams. I'll start. My name's Devin. I have been involved with the jam since 2008 and became an organizer in 2014 and a lead in 2017. And then in 2019, with Michael LaHood stepping back, our good friend who had been in charge for many years, I basically took control. And here we are, five years later, and we made it through a pandemic, and it's been quite a historical journey getting to our 20th anniversary. So I'd like to introduce some of my co-leads and board members. We've got Lorca. Would you, we've got Robert, we've got Anken, and we have an emeritus here with us, BK, who has been involved since the very beginning of the jams.
And Beacon just popped up.
Oh, and Beacon's here. All right. Perfect. Hello. And Beacon has joined us.
So we cannot hear Beacon at the moment, by the way.
Okay, now can you hear me?
All right, so we have our full board here. Lorca, would you tell us a little bit about how you got involved with the jams?
Yeah, absolutely. I got involved in the jams around 2015 when I was at UChicago. UChicago is one of the universities that this jam does safety trainings at every year. So that's how I got involved with spinning. And then I joined the board in 2020.
Fabulous. Greatful to have you. Robert, what about you?
Hey y'all, my name is Robert. I also go by Lion. I found out about the jams in 2015, going through a lot in life. Discovered acro yoga, discovered yoga, discovered the ecstatic dance community. And my acro teacher, Tatiana Sanchez, brought me to Full Moon Jam, where we started doing acro yoga teaching before the jams from 2016 to the beginning of the pandemic. And then got into fire spinning during the pandemic and didn't look back. 2022 volunteered every day. And in 2023, last year, was asked to join the board and help lead these events.
All right, welcome aboard. And Beacon?
Um, I got involved after doing the Moonlight Parade. I started doing fire in 2019 and auditioned like shortly after I picked up props and fell in love with everybody and had a really beautiful, life-changing conversation with BK and Hoodie in the loft of Trans Am and came on right before the pandemic. So it was like we had like kind of, it's been a journey. It's been very different. And I now live in Kalamazoo, Michigan, so I split my time between Michigan and Chicago as I'm getting ready to start my masters in the fall.
Fabulous. Well, good luck with that. Anken, how did you get involved?
Well, I think in 2008, you would have found me hand drumming at the jams. And I've long had a lot of friends doing fire spinning and been an enthusiast for them. But they would be like, come learn how to spin. And I would be like, no, no, I make interactive art installations and do other things. But eventually you can only say no for so long. And I had to dabble in spinning and flow arts, and I do a lot of acro yoga in particular. And I'm trying to dream up some ways to integrate that with fire performance. But I joined the board last year alongside Lion and looking forward to another good season.
Absolutely. I forgot to mention that even though I had no interest in fire while going to the jams at Acro Camp, Anken was the first person who let me use their palm torches. And I don't know why, I went to the jams for social interaction and dancing. It was like, oh yeah, fire is cool, but like I just want to dance. As soon as I touched that first palm torch, it was just literally a spark.
Yeah, similarly, I had also been a drummer for six years before I really got involved with the fire scene. And I definitely miss being a part of that. It was an amazing experience. And so running things on the fireside is definitely a little more chaotic. I mean, both sides are chaotic. But I think we've done a good job keeping things going and integrating the drummers and creating a beautiful cohesion between everything. BK, did you want to say anything?
Hey, you know, all I want to say is I'm really, really happy and proud that you guys have been able to continue this momentum, you know, in such an incredible and responsible way that, I mean, this thing is recognized nationally. I've been in other cities and they've heard of the Chicago Full Moon Jam, you know, so it's really cool. Been involved in the community since '03, and the first jam was just a gathering of people celebrating one of our own that was going off to another adventure in '04. And here we are 20 years later and it's still happening. So it's cool. Congrats.
Yes, thank you for being a part of starting this amazing community and incredible event. And you were there at the beginning. And Anken, would you like to kind of give us a brief recap on kind of the history of the jams?
Well, BK could probably tell us more about those first events. But yeah, in 2004, it was a group of friends getting together and celebrating each other. It was a goodbye party, is that right? I thought it was a birthday party, but both, yeah. Yeah. And by 2008, I mean, we had moved across the, from the lakefront to the grass by the lakefront. And we were definitely in coordination with Chicago and park districts and police. But when did Night Out in the Park start? It was?
2016. So up until that point, it was kind of just a very organic, people show up and it just happens sort of thing. There was, you know, a group of organizers who would set the dates. And there was a website that basically posted it up and Facebook event pages. So it was all very kind of underground for the first 10 years or so. But as you said, we eventually got involved. The bikes or the cops loved us. They would come by and just watch and hang out. Said it was great. The aldermen knew we existed and supported us. And then, yeah.
Yeah, we've got some notes on the agenda, you know, things we like to talk about regarding gaining approval from the aldermen and the bike cops and coordinating with the city and making sure that the event is actually, you know, well-loved and supported by the broader city and community. And performing about fire means taking responsibility to educate regarding fire performance and safety. We can establish safety norms, trainings, and encouraging the respect of our community and talking about consent and other community values that we have. And we like to establish protocols to ensure that everyone feels welcome and safe at our events, very inclusive. And so I think from the very beginning, you know, a lot of those values were just a part of the community that was establishing the Full Moon Jam. And they've only grown in terms of intention as we involve the greater public and welcoming audiences that have been growing ever since. So we're a staple of Chicago summer nightlife, at least when the moon is full. So and I'm glad that a lot of those intentions have, you know, a storied history and that we can continue those intentions going forward with more training and all sorts of things planned, so.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we've got 20 years of experience that we've been sharing with the world. And so, yeah, there's a lot of, been a lot of growth over the last 20 years. And Beacon, would you like to kind of touch up on some of that past?
Sure. If this is in the notes, I don't know where my computer is. So you want me to just fill in like what I've been a part of?
Sure.
Looking for it, but, well, I came on in 2019 when we had the wonderful pleasure of doing the Moonlight Parade downtown, which we got as a grant from the city as part of a bunch of other groups that got to perform in front of the Bean. And it was really incredible. It's how I got to meet so many people. And I really, truly am sorry. I don't know where my laptop is.
Beacon, I'm sending you a picture of the notes.
Perfect, thank you. Because I don't know if I can look at them on my phone at the same time, but we're gonna try.
We're gonna try.
We're gonna try.
Yeah, no, the history of the jam has to include marching in parades, which has been happening for a very long time as well. And I forgot about the performance at the Bean. I mean, because I wasn't there. But like, is there anything else like that that you can think of?
Yeah, well, I've got this. Here we go. Sorry, is this ecosystem? That's, oh yeah, all of the Halloween parades, the jams at Maggie Daley Park. We've done the Fire and Ice downtown before, and we do multiple parades, the Halsted Parade. And the Nights Out in the Parks, the Halloween parades. Sorry, y'all. I'm feeling very ADHD right now. And we've also expanded our infrastructure. So that's something we are actively working on. Obviously pulling in more volunteers and things like that. And trying to keep up with all of the demands of having a larger growing event, which was interesting pre and post COVID. We've done pre-jam artist showcases with groups like Circus Team, Elements Ballet. How far down this you guys want me to go?
All the way.
All the way? Okay, cool. We've got the Moonlight Parade, which I touched on. That's how I got connected to the jams to begin with. It was an $18,000 grant, DCase Grant from the city. That was again, 2019. We do educational programming at universities like University of Chicago and Northwestern, which are still ongoing. We have the Guardian Training Program and Community Empowerment Trainings. During the pandemic, we did the Digital Jams and Reverse Parade in 2021. And now we have all of the board members that you have met this evening and event leads and 20-plus organizers who are all incredible and fill in the holes and help us grow as a jam and grow as a community. And we are incredibly, incredibly grateful to the Nights Out in the Park program and the Pyrotechnic, which used to be, or it used to be Pyrotechnic and now is Black Circle and all of the volunteers and the humans that help, even the people that attend the jams when we have things like the rogue drones. People do a really good job of dispersing information as people attending the jams so that we as organizers and event leads can help mitigate that alongside the Guardians and the Fire Eyes.
Absolutely. No, thank you. Yeah, the volunteers and all the organizers and everybody that shows up to help carry things and to help set up things and to help clean up the park. Like clearly, we cannot do it without them. If the park was a complete mess after every jam, then we would not be allowed to continue doing this. And there have been times throughout our history where we've run across issues like people not cleaning up after themselves. And thankfully, with some gentle reminders through our Facebook and the website and, you know, every, every social media outlet we have, people have really stepped up. And I distinctly remember after the last jam last year, the park looked spotless. And, you know, that's really incredible for thousands of people to show up and there'd literally not be a single piece of trash afterwards. And, you know, some people need some gentle reminding, of course. So we have volunteers walk around and help pick things up and encourage everyone to participate again, so that we can continue this amazing tradition. And, you know, as I mentioned, we've had a few near extinction events. Permitting became a huge issue in 2015, 2016. It's a necessity that if you're going to have hundreds of people spinning fire in front of a large audience, that the city requires some sort of permits and proof that you know what you're doing and to hire a professional to oversee that. So we were able to do that through a crowdfunding campaign in 2015. So we were able to raise the funds for that. We also needed to find insurance, so there was a scare about that. And that basically helped save our butts from, again, being able to pull the permits and be a legitimate, recognized organization by the city of Chicago. And then the Night Out in the Park really helped out in 2016 by eliminating our park district permit expenses, providing us with porta potties in 2020, I think, 2021. We got porta potties, which has been a game changer for everybody. And so through that, there have been a multitude of different communities and organizations and subgroups, the fire spinners, of course, but also the drummers and the photographers and yoga groups and all sorts of other people that use the jams as a meetup to get together, share their passions and their love of art. So a lot of, a lot has changed, but a lot has also stayed the same. And, you know, we've gone through ups and downs, but over the last 20 years, I think we've reached an amazing equilibrium of accommodating everybody's needs and finding a good synergy that, you know, gives everyone a space to enjoy themselves peacefully. And I think we all need that these days. So.
Even last year, you know, the very last jam, we kept accommodating the drummers, right? It started to get overwhelming in the drum and dance circle. They were getting their stuff knocked over. So now we are roping up the drummers so they feel more protected and more safe and, you know, creating, you know. So we feel, we feel we're at a good place, but you know, with every year comes more needs and more necessities. So we're still growing, growing with the times.
And for one or two jams this year, we're also going to have security specifically for the drummers this year. So we, last year, we're forced to get security for the fuel depot area just due to some problematic individuals, and we won't go into all that. But needless to say, we have added expenses throughout the years. So we'll go over the budget in a second. But first, let's just quickly recap what happened in 2023. And Lorca, would you like to give a summary of that?
Absolutely. We had a very successful year. All in all, we held three reserve jams, five jams, two parades, and a fundraiser. So that's 11 events total. Like Devin and Lion said, we have a new drumming setup that worked really beautifully and gave the drummers a safe space. We successfully relaunched the Guardian program with fantastic results. We had the Solstice Jam in Evanston, which was once again a huge success. Unfortunately, Palmasana Park was canceled due to rain, but we will be back there this year. The two parades were very cold, but very great, and we'll be back with those again this year as well. We taught another fire safety class at the University of Chicago and are in talks with the student leaders there to host another one again in October, hopefully. We had the new Moon Jam fundraiser where we had 13 classes, free food, a drum jam, and a showcase. We had about 60-plus ticket buyers, which helped us raise over 5K. And in the course of the year, we trained over 160 fire performers and 13 new guardians, which means that, oh, in total, 360 performers are now on our approval list.
That's crazy. Is that? Is that after like taking away everybody from 2021, now that we're 2024?
Yeah, from 2020, yeah. Eliminated probably 150 people last year. So I would say that roughly, you know, 1,000, 2,000 fire performers have come through the jams for training or participation or just to be involved. So, yeah.
Amazing. That's amazing.
And that's on, that's on paper. Who knows how many came through in the early years?
In the early, yeah, right. We probably average, I would say, usually between 60 to 80 fire performers at each jam. I think the smallest ones are Evanston, like 40 maybe, but.
And our largest one last year was like 112, 120 or something?
Yeah. Yeah, it was pretty.
Amazing. That's amazing.
Cool.
So now let's just kind of quickly touch on the numbers. This is the most exciting part of the meeting where we talk about our budget and our expenses for the year that we expect, as well as what we hope to raise this year. And Brian, would you like to quickly retouch on our expenses from last year?
Yes. So last year, in 2023, let me look up the, do, 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 doom. We surprisingly did up, oh, sorry. In 2023, we had about $17,000 of income. $26 were donations from Amazon Smile. We had about $3,900 in our performance and parade fees, 350 in our workshop fees, and we had about 12,000 in grants through the Night Out in the Park and the city of Evanston, as well as some other and some refunds for more administrative sides of things. And for expenses, we had about $22,500 in expenses. Most of that being the insurance, about $5,000 over for just the insuring, 3,500 in fire permitting, 3,000 in just production expenses, and $4,000 in rental, including our storage for all of our gear, rentals for where we hosted the Reserve Jams and like for the parading truck, as well as we rented the truck and the back part of it, correct, Devin?
Yep.
We can do the parades safely and sound. And yeah, when it comes to 2024, those numbers are going to look very, very little. We had applied for the Fund the Flow Art Grants and we had won the first place. Thank you, Devin, for your fantastic grant writing ability. Fund the Flow Arts was a new grant that started this year. I believe it's supposed to keep going for 10 years, and they had about $50,000 that they wanted to give out. They ended up getting over $100, $200,000 worth of applicants. So it was really popular, really big, being a well-established community and a well-established event and organizer. We had, we had a bit of an advantage and, yeah, we got some funding. So that's, we're really excited about that, which I'll talk a little bit more in a second. I want to go in order now that we're there. So we will be back in Evanston in 2024 with the Citizens Greener Evanston. We have, unfortunately, the city of Chicago and the Nights Out Parade, or sorry, Night Out in the Park, cut our budgeting this year from last year. But we had taught, we're in talks, and we have signed a contract with the Winnamen Arc and Advisory Council. And we will be hosting a Fourth of July Jam in Winnamen Park to make it six jams this year instead of having to cut one due to our lack of funding. And with their donation, it will bring us back to even, which we're really happy and grateful for. Each permit for the Chicago-based jams are about $500. Each permit, the permit for the Evanston Jam or outside Chicago is about $1,000. Our Pyrotechnician, Pyrotechnic, they give us a discount for Chicago jams because they have a partnership with the park districts. And then on average, we spend about $600 for a fire group fire insurance via PEEP and 335 for general liability via Rolay. Replacement gears usually around $500 annually. Fuel expenses are about $2,500 a year. We average about 100 gallons, about 13 per jam, not including the parades. Storage rental is expected to be about $1,800 this year. Security expenses are anticipated to be just under $3,000. And we are looking to get E and O insurance that will be about $1,500. So that being said, total 2024 expenses are supposed to be about $58,000, much more than the $22,000 last year. But that includes jams and parades. That also includes the grant that we got, which is $17,000 in expenses, so we can have a prop library. And we can also put on a winter workshop series that Devin will talk more about. We are spending about $13,000. We're putting about, spending about $13,000 to put on a 20th Anniversary Equinox Flow Festival in September, which we will talk about more. And about $11,000 for merch and operation expenses. But that being said, we do expect roughly to break even this year with five, even though the Night Out in the Park has decreased their budget from, our budget from $9,000 to $5,000, which I don't think it was confirmed, but I believe it's because the city of Chicago is estimated to be at a half a billion dollar deficit this year, mostly with refugee funding and trying to get that going. So, you know, we understand it was kind of an all-around thing for Nights Out in the Park, why they had to cut the budget. But with the Fourth of July Jam that brings us back up, the Evanston Climate Action Solstice Jam is, we were able to raise our budget about $1,200 from last year. And we gained about $12,000 from the Fund the Flow Arts. At the, it was expected to our last years, but we ended up receiving at the beginning of this year was about $7,500 from our new Moon Jam fundraiser in December, as well as our donor matching program that we're so grateful to have every year. About, and about $13,000 are anticipated from the Equinox Fest because we're hoping to break even, $1,500 from both of our parades, Arts in the Dark and Halsted. And we are hoping that our merchandise will be successful this year, about $7,600. We have a, we have plans for order your own t-shirts so we don't have to mass produce. We can just order them. We get a kickback for each shirt. We hope to get bandanas. And you guys excited for the prime merchandise of this year? We have Phoenix plushies.
Yay.
Our plan with these Phoenix plushies, we have 50. We've yet to teach them the fire breathe, but, you know, if they take love, maybe they'll start. So our goal with these plushies, we have 50 of each. We, me, my partner, and one of the organizers, Valerie, we are going to hand-sew shirts on them that we will screen print our Full Moon Jam logo. And if you are emeritus, if you are a founder, if you are a lead or an organizer, you will be getting a free plushie. We will get red ones. Yeah, BK is excited. We will get red ones for the leads, a purple one for me because I'm making that. And I want to feel like Mace Windu some days. We will get black ones for the organizers, but for the general public, we will get, it'll be black shirts with the Full Moon Jam logo. And yeah, we're really excited to date these guys, you know. A little thank you to all of, to the people who came before us and to those who help. And, you know, for the general public to keep supporting us and keep remembering us with little chinkets.
That's fantastic. I'm so happy.
So yeah, as you mentioned, uh we're gonna have fifty of those for sale. It'll be a limited run of those. Um but if they sell fifty or sixty depending, um but if they sell out, then we'll definitely order more. And uh we're yeah, kind of hoping to go um. Uh sell at least a hundred shirts, a hundred bandanas, and that will basically help us to break even this year. Uh so obviously, the goal is to sell more than that. Um but um I'm live streaming the um estimated budget that we have this year that kind of breaks down. Where our expenses are coming from, where our income is gonna coming uh gonna come from. And this more or less just gives us kind of a brief little uh window. So um we're we're pretty good right now. Uh we'd rather not lose money. Uh we have a little bit of savings, but um you know, we need to save that for a rainy day. And uh if all goes well this year, then hopefully we will do even more next year. And so yeah, so everybody can help us out.
No, I was just gonna say I'm hoping to uh have the plushies ready to go. Uh the very latest is gonna be by the Equinox Festival in September, um but you know, if we can get done sooner, we'll do our best.
Yes, I do hope that almost all of the merchandise will be available by then. That is our goal, so September. Plan to put in your full moon jam T-shirt order um or bandanas. Hopefully we'll have those sooner. Uh and so yeah, we'll 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 figure things out. But uh is there anything else you wanted to mention on the budget?
Um I don't think so. Currently, we are sitting at about nineteen thousand and five hundred. Yeah, nineteen thousand five hundred, which is fantastic. We just paid our new storage rental. Um which we're hoping to get for to hoping to stay. Stay out for a while until we can find a more sustainable uh place that can also host our reserve jams. Um and yeah, I think that's all.
Yeah, excellent. All right. Yeah, I don't think there was anything else. Seems like you touched on everything. Um so if anyone has any questions about the budget or wants to know more, um then obviously let us know. Uh or if you're interested in helping us raise funds by applying for grants or whatever else, then definitely reach out to us. We could use all the help we can get. All right, so I guess.
If you are.
Yep.
If you are, if you have experience writing grants, please reach out. Um I have intentions to try to write uh federal grants as well as library grants. Because apparently we can build on our prop library because we are calling it a prop library, which is a toy library. And we might be able to get uh library grants to keep building it.
That's cool.
Yeah, so we'll we'll need we'll need uh grants for storage for um other things, security. Uh as he he briefly mentioned, we are looking into errors and omissions insurance, which uh long story short, basically covers up from liability. Of anybody taking information we provide and applying it incorrectly. Uh or saying we didn't tell them about something or something ridiculous because we don't, we tell them everything. But uh the point being, uh our goal is to publish an operations manual. That will provide a um comprehensive instructions on how to effectively host your own jam in your own city. And it'll provide all of the documentation necessary for anybody that's interested in uh hosting their own jams. Uh we'll have safety documents for how how to host the trainings. It'll host the fuel depot guide, so pretty much everything you need to know on permitting, insurance, all the aspects that we put into um the jams. To make sure that your event is legitimate and respected by local authorities and can be sustainable. Uh so that you don't you don't get shut down due to any of the issues we've experienced in our past. So for twenty twenty four, we have a very exciting lineup of uh activities this year. We have fourteen events planned with six jam events uh between June and uh September. We will have three reserve jam trainings. Those are the fire safety trainings. All our performers are required to attend. Um we will also be in the two parades again and of course, our Equinox Flow Fest happening in September. Um the reserve jams have moved locations because we um have lost unfortunately the storage. The building that we were using for storage and trainings was sold this year, so we have had to move much of our storage. Um into a temporary location. We're looking for um new options for that. So if anyone has any suggestions on uh maker spaces or warehouse spaces or large open facilities with a large courtyard. That is at a legitimate business, um you know, it's not shady in a safe neighborhood, public accessible. Uh or uh yeah, um or not visible from the from the public also. The events needs to be um somewhat private. So if anyone has any suggestions on that, let us know. We would, we would definitely love to know. But the.
As much as we.
Yep.
As much as we want to do private spaces too, you know, if we want it, we want to oblige to building codes and any legality. Because we work closely with the city of Chicago um and all that.
So permitting requires that it not be a public event. So all the trainings need to be private, invite only. And only those that are authorized to be there uh are there. So those are gonna be on Saturday, June fifteenth. And Sunday, July fourteenth and Sunday, August eighteenth in Humboldt Park. So we will be posting up to sign up for that uh probably next week. And so anybody that's interested in taking those trainings, make sure to sign up as soon as possible. We also are going to be hosting the Evanston Summer Solstice Jam on Friday, June twenty first. So that is going to be the first public full moon jam event up in Evanston uh that uh we can talk about. Uh we have the Fourth of July event, of course, in Winnebago Park on the Fourth of July. And we do have three other, or sorry, four other Chicago events that are scheduled through the night out in the park. And uh due to our agreement, we are not allowed to announce those dates until next week. So next Monday, uh on all of our social media and on the website, we will have a list of all of the events and all the happenings. So uh but here's a handy little trick that if you are ever curious of when the full moon jam is going to be scheduled. Uh we almost always host our events Monday through Thursday on the closest date to the full moon. So if the full moon is gonna be on Friday, you can probably bet that the full moon jam jam will happen on Thursday. And.
Not not the new moon? You're saying it's the full moon?
I know, right? It's kind of weird, it's hard to confuse. Right? Yeah, you gotta stop growing up when it's dark. So June and September is almost always when we host them. Due to our agreement with the night out in the park, we aren't allowed to host or announce any dates in May or earlier. So everybody is always asking us, when's the next one? When's the next one? You can almost always bet it's going to be in June. So camp plan for that um and know that in June, July, August and September this year, we will have. Um full moon jams at Foster Beach and Palmasano Park, uh just like we have the last two years. So next week on May thirteenth, everything will be announced on our website. And um right now, you can schedule June twenty first and Fourth of July as two jams that you can put on your calendar. We also, of course, have our first Camp Out Fire and Drumming Festival, which is scheduled for September twentieth through the twenty-second in Woodstock, Illinois. We plan on hosting over twenty workshops and there will be a drum jam, of course, and fire spinning, DJs and hopefully more. So ticket links and volunteer instructor uh instructor signups are now posted online. You can go to fullmoonjam.org. You can buy your ticket. You can sign up to be an instructor. You can sign up to be a volunteer uh or a vendor. So look for those links and we hope to see you all there. Um just a quick um note, there will probably be an attendance cap of around a hundred and fifty. So tickets sales are gonna be very limited, so if you're watching this, might want to consider going to buy. A ticket or sign up to be a volunteer as soon as possible because they will probably go out very quickly. Um we also, as Robert mentioned, were awarded a grant from the Fund the Flow Arts to expand our educational programming. And we are going to be acquiring a prop library, which is going to consist of ten to a dozen. Uh props of every variety. So we'll have dragon staff, poi, juggling clubs, hoops, fans. Uh the all bunch of other things, at least eight to ten items with at least eight to ten of those items. So we're gonna have a huge library that we plan on hosting six workshops, November through April. And every month, once a month, we will host it at a park district or wherever we can find that's cheap. Uh we've exploring a few different venues right now. Um but uh those will be donation based, so we hope that people will pay ten, twenty dollars, whatever they can afford. And but uh they will also help to pay instructors, so hopefully we'll get at least a dozen instructors or so. That we will be able to compensate for their time, their skill, their knowledge. And hopefully this will be the start of an ongoing uh opportunity that we will be able to then approach. Other park districts or schools or after school programs or other organizations. And offer that we have this massive library of props, we have skilled instructors. And we'll be able to host more of that on a regular basis. So that'll be a win-win for everybody and provide everybody with a complete opportunity to learn the flow arts from start to finish. So you can ta- taking your workshops on whatever prop you'd like to learn. Um or you can just come and attend and kind of play around with the props and see what you might want to use or explore. And then you can attend our fire safety trainings. You can get comfortable with fire. You can, you know, practice in a small setting. With a small group of people who are there to support you. And then when you're ready, you can jump into the full uh the fire circle at one of the full moon jams and experience it for yourself. So yeah, uh we've got a lot planned.
I think Devon, we talked about um a way to encourage more people who can't always make our safety trainings in the summertime is. Because we'll be hosting these events on our off season, we can offer more safety trainings every other month or something like that. To give more people the opportunities to uh you know, travel through the city if they're from out of town or you know, if just. Dates don't work uh to come take our training, so um also if. Yeah.
I don't know if we had planned to have safety trainings at the uh winter workshop series. But we can certainly um try to do that. I think there's no reason we couldn't host one in November, possibly April or May of next year. So we'll have a couple more opportunities. So yeah.
I was gonna say also uh next year, if we, if uh you guys uh reach out to us. And uh ask us when the schedule release is gonna be happening in twenty twenty-five. And we're a little bit more impatient, it's because we did not have an off season to relax this upcoming winter.
Yeah, pretty much. Yeah, we 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 definitely have overloaded our plate this year. Um so uh definitely have to ask everyone be patient when you're asking for the dates, when you're asking for. Eh you know, any information basically between January and April, do not expect a prompt reply. Um and again, we always post mid to late eight May uh all of the dates, so know that. Um all right, so as I mentioned, we're in search of new storage space. Um things are okay for for now, but uh we'd rather find somewhere a little bit more reliable and ideally with somewhere that. Also has a space for us to host the training, so we're we're looking out for that. Um we also, as Robert mentioned, have the swag and the merchandise, T-shirts, hoodies, bandanas, plushies. Uh we have what you want. We are hoping to get some business cards, other flyers, something that we can pass out. That'll allow people to kind of um stay up to date on our on our website and also uh sign up for the newsletter. So at least twice or every two months, we try to put up a post to notify everyone of upcoming events. So that's an easy way to again, just stay up to date on everything that we are doing. Um we also are looking to form new partnerships with other organizations. Um we're really hoping to be able to bring back circus team into our opening performance. Um uh ju- uh before the jams, the pre-jam entertainment. Uh they were, they were fantastic a few years ago, so we'd love to be able to kind of feature new circus. Groups or organizations, particularly ones that are nonprofit or have an outreach program of some sort. Um youth-centered, you know, something to that extent uh would be great. We want to really fill out the space and. Give people a chance to kind of showcase and um again, find new ways to partner with with organizations that are doing similar things to us. Uh Alchemy is a uh flow arts organization that we are looking into partnering with and collaborating with. We're planning on hosting uh uh basically, they're, they will be training the fire art safety. And so anybody that takes the safety trainings at Alchemy will be able to attend the jams. So uh kind of exploring ways that we can partner with more organizations so that um. More people have an opportunity to participate in the jams, uh but are also being taught safely all of the protocols that are expected. Uh Burn is another organization that's talked about uh partnering with us for uh promoting their events, but also talking about our consent initiative. And uh encouraging people to come and have a table set up at the jams where we can talk about, you know. The jams themselves. If you have any questions about the jams, the history, experience, you know, anything like that, if you're looking for more information. And also to really emphasize the importance of consent. Uh it's a huge staple of what we do and it is really important that we continue to remind people. Uh at every turn, every chance we get about the importance of consent. So we hope to be able to continue the tradition of having a round table to discuss those. And how we can improve uh on all of that and encourage more participation from the community. On uh reporting violations or you know, our general code of conduct and how to resolve. When those issues happen and what we can do about it as a community. We hope to be able to expand our guardian training, of course, and uh provide ask first buttons and other things just to kind of. Again, encourage more community participation and awareness of of the events. And again, as I mentioned, publish our operations manual and fire safety training manuals so that other cities can then start to do what we do. Um yeah, anyone else have anything to mention uh on twenty twenty-four? Cool, yeah, so we have a lot planned. Needless to say, next week, we have a uh very handy little city map that we're gonna post. That'll have all the dates chronologically listed with little markers, so makes it easy to keep track of where we are because we're kind of all over the place this year. Uh as a general.
Including.
What's up?
Including the reserve jam and the uh festival will be on that map, so it's a one, one place uh find everything.
Exactly, so everything that we're doing all in one location. Well, I guess the parades won't be listed. And the location of the reserve jams will not be listed. Uh we can mention that they are in Humboldt Park. So you can plan for that, but uh only those that have signed up will be notified of the exact location of that. But otherwise, the dates are all there and of course, you can always email us if you have any questions. Um the last thing, before we open things up to the floor, is we want to remind everyone of their sound and light policy. Um and amplified sound has to be approved in advance, so don't bring your speaker and start blasting. Uh meatloaf, you know, like no, we just, that doesn't vibe with what we do. So uh we really request that um. All sound levels be less than a hundred decibels so that it doesn't overpower the drum circle. The drum circle is the most important um you know, sound that we need, that we all want to hear. And so nothing should be killing that vibe or meshing uh or disrupting that. And no lights. We've had some incidents with people showing up with lights and shining it at the crowd and at the performers. And obviously that is not okay. Um we have a a list of uh asks that we've asked people not to do at the jams. We post that on every event page and it's all over the website, so um we really. Appreciate everybody stepping up to help kind of support our our cultural norms and uh help to preserve. What makes the jam so magical? Uh and so yeah, uh if there's nothing else, then I think we can. Open things up to uh a Q and A, uh an open session for anybody that has questions, if there's anyone on Twitch. Or anyone in the Discord that wants to unmute, um you know, uh let us know and we will try to figure out how to do that. Um here we go. Somebody asks, are there other cities that folks know of doing jams like this? Um and yes, as Fire Lion explained, Chicago is definitely the largest. Um he is according to Fire Lion, Fort Lauderdale used to have a small one, but not anymore. San Diego has weekly jams. And um certainly doesn't have the production value that we have. Uh there are a lot of cities that try to do full moon jams uh or something akin to it. Uh, or something akin to it, but um, certainly not to the level that we have achieved. Uh, we're, you know, as I've said, getting thousands of people, three hundred and sixty approved, approved performers just in the last two years. And uh, more over, over the, you know, and um, of course, being sponsored by the city. And paid to do them is, is not something many other people have achieved. But. Uh, I believe that there are organizations in New York and San Francisco and. I'm sure every state that you go to is going to have some sort of uh, jam. But most of the time, they're gonna be underground. They're gonna be at a private location. Um, they're not gonna be featured. In a city newsletter. So, but um, yeah, if anyone does know of any, then please let us know. I believe that uh, we were reached out recently by someone looking to start one in Madison. So. Uh, we're gonna be working with them. They attended the trainings last year, said they loved what we were doing. And so we're gonna. Hopefully be able to have an operations manual for them to uh, use as a reference for, for that. Um, I suppose there's also a lot of. What's that? There's also a lot of.
Oops, I was gonna say Mike Spin says that there's a weekly jams in Hawaii on Hun- in Honolulu and on Maui.
Yeah, awesome. So pop over there for a weekend. Uh, that sounds great. I would love to do that. Um, but there's also a lot of flow festivals. So there are at least a dozen or so festivals around the United States. That host weekend-long festivals dedicated to the flow arts. And so they will typically have fire safety trainings. They'll have classes and all of the different props from people around the world. So if you're really interested in delving deep, those are great experiences to meet a lot of flow artists and get more involved with the community. Um, a lot of what the jams have uh, achieved through our fire safety trainings, through our guardian program. Uh, has been adopted by many of these festivals. Uh, most of the festivals I know. Now have guardians walking around, helping to provide uh, support and information to attendees. And provide, you know, basically are there to enforce consent norms and um. Yeah, so, so a lot of what we do has had a huge impact on other events.
Uh, Lorca Beacon, do you guys wanna talk about fire alchemy at all?
Yeah.
In regards to an event that we are partnering up, partner, partnering up with this year?
Nope, you're muted.
Unmute yourself, Beacon.
Sorry, I'm trying to help with ambient noise. Uh, yeah, Lorca and I are both. I'm part of the planning crew for fire alchemy, which happens outside of Chicago and Oregon, Illinois. It's a common, we call it a fire gathering, um, as opposed to a retreat. Um, it's focused on skill share, but also like the ritual component of fire and healing. Uh, and Lorca and I lead the safety trainings. So if you come to fire alchemy, um. We will be compiling a master list with everybody's legal names because we need it. Um, so that there can be interconnectivity and cross pollination in the fire safety training component. So that if you're not able to make it to a reserve jam for the safety training, um, but you do come to the. Fire alchemy gathering, we could have that transfer over to the full moon jam. Um, and there's already a lot of cross pollination between the two groups. And I was really excited to get to have Lorca there and teach safety training with me. Yeah.
Yay. Yeah, no, that sounds great. I would love to be able to uh, collaborate with more organizations so we can make. Uh, you know, make our event more accessible. Obviously, there's a lot of logistics to our permits and insurance. And we have to make sure that every single fire performer at our events is. Basically. Coherent, that they know what they're doing, that they're competent in their abilities and aren't going to set any babies on fire. So we really need to make sure that that is, that is a guarantee. So we. Need to basically preview and ensure at a private event or a private um, space that someone's capable. And unfortunately, we're all very busy. So there are only a few times a year that we are able to host those types of events. Which is what the reserve jams are.
And that being said, if you wanna promote anything or you wanna team up with the full moon jam, or you guys have friends from out of town who want to. It is really important that you guys don't hit us up a day before. You don't hit us up a week before. Borderline a month before, right? We've known about fire alchemy for a few years. And now that two of our board members are part of it, you know, we've had time to discuss what that partnership can look like. You know, we're in the public eye. We're not an underground event. We need to, you know, we need to make sure that we have all the details. And we're not just, you know, being thrown into something last minute, uh, that can jeopardize our security and relationship with uh, the park district.
Exactly.
And I'll say that another OG board member, Liz Breen, is also involved with fire alchemy. So. Um, and also along that, that path, if anyone knows of organizations, you know, local or near Chicago. That do skill share things. There's a lot that are on our radar, but again, we're a small team of humans. Who are all pretty interconnected in our own communities already. So I know there are places where skill share and education is happening that maybe we don't know about. And we'd love to be able to weave all those communities together, um, to offer both the skills that we have to share, but also to learn from each other and continue. Interconnecting.
Yeah, there are also. Non-fire events like Taco Tuesdays. There's a juggling club that happens once a week or twice a week, I think now. Yeah, so uh, Mondays, Tuesdays and Thursdays, they're um, in uh, Jefferson Park Fieldhouse on Mondays. Palmer Square on Tuesdays.
A circus experience in the north side, which is a circus school uh, owned by Wolfgang uh, on Thursdays. But that's all north side. So if you guys know anything happening on the south side, on the west side. Like we wanna promote ourselves, which is why we do the Palmasano Park uh, as the last jam because we wanna outreach to. Different communities, to different neighborhoods, to promote our arts, to create more uh, artistic expression.
Yeah, give people an opportunity to do something they might not have ever thought about doing. So uh, there's a lot of great things of, in the flow arts, uh, and uh, it has provided a. Lot of people with a chance to heal, to grow, to, you know, experience new things, to challenge their fears. And uh, there's a lot of really beautiful. Opportunity that we wanna make more accessible for everyone. So if anyone um, has any suggestions, definitely reach out. Um, Cody asked, does anyone have an idea about non-performer attendance numbers at the jam? That's difficult to say. Um, it's a lot, a very large crowd. It's kind of hard to um. Estimate our insurance says it's around eight hundred. So. That's what I'll go with.
I could probably say from the eyes of an incoherent person, they have suggested three thousand plus. But, but we cannot take them at their word because we do not think they were sober. So we don't know if we can trust that. And like we said, our insurance says it's eight hundred, so we gotta say eight hundred.
I mean, we also are at a public park. So there's no, you know, quarantined area that says this is specifically the jams. So. It's hard to tell who's there for the jams and who's just wa- out walking their dog or going to get some tacos or, you know, watch, watch uh, the moonlight. On the waters. Um, do we have any questions on disc uh, over Twitch, Eric?
I was just gonna ask you, nice.
I've been watching. The only one that popped up, which I think was addressed was about um, if merch would be onsite or online.
Gotcha. Yes, no, that is gonna be online. Uh, we might have bandanas and plushies at the Equinox. Festival. So we might also decide to pre-print a few just for display, um, or to have on hand for the festival, but. Otherwise, we're really trying to limit the amount of inventory that we have to manage. We are having storage issues as it is. And would rather not have several hundred boxes of stuff to, to keep track of. So.
When it comes to that, yeah, I think having uh, samples onsite would be great, but obviously we don't wanna bring our entire inventory. Um, you know, I can bring the plushies in my car, uh, but also at the same time, uh, running to the cars is a whole new task. Uh, it could be something as um, getting people's contact information or being like, hey, if you want these at the end of the jam. Meet me at the car. We can make that transaction, you know, meet me. Oh gosh, now I know how that's on. We're gonna need a big trench coat. Kinda, kinda T-shirt color you're looking for, huh?
Got what you need. Um, okay, so.
Also a comment from one of the drummers that just said, as a drummer who participates, thank you for what you've done to keep our circle less cluttered.
Absolutely. No, I, 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 as someone who has been involved in the drum circle. I know how chaotic it gets and how annoying it is when the guy with the boombox playing meatloaf shows up next to you and you're like, what are you doing, dude? Like. You're not reading the room here. So yeah, we really wanted to preserve that. Um, my brother also used to attend the jams. He's actually the reason I started going. And uh, several years ago, he decided he couldn't really handle the chaos anymore and people running into him and not really respecting the space. And so. Uh, we're hoping that by creating a sanctioned off area for the drummers, um, you'll be able to have an easier time communicating with each other. And creating that, that beautiful sound that uh, is so uh, synonymous with, with the jams and so symbolic. Uh, yeah. So we got plushies. Yep.
Yeah, as much as I like to get my nervous system shocked by having some guy drunkenly cross the lines and then. Um, threaten to fight me because I touched him and he's crossing permitted and unsafe zones. We don't need any of that either. That's just.
Yeah.
Too much, too much.
So another reminder is we are a sober event. We ask that people do not get intoxicated to come to our event. This is not the space for it. Um, you know, i- it's a beautiful night, so let's not make it awkward by being a drunken fool. So if anybody notices any sort of behavior that is out of place, that seems reckless, that seems dangerous, or somebody acting unusual or. Yeah, putting, making people uncomfortable, please come find us. Uh, we are here to support you. We have guardians. We have people who can help. Uh, you know, provide you with, with the support. So we'll do our best, uh, but we can only do anything if you all. Let us know. So yes, stay sober at the full moon jams, please. Um, so I wanted to ask a few questions. Um, if, I don't know if anybody's interested on the chat right now that um. Wants to answer, but what do you love most about the jams? And what would you like to see improve at the jams? I would love to hear um, anybody that, again, that's in this chat right now, feel free to unmute if you can and uh. Let us know. Oh, yeah, that's nice. Nope. Well, yeah, nope. So all of our fire performers are required to be completely sober. Um, so somebody mentioned that they saw somebody drinking, drinking and fire breathing at an event because uh, they were drunk and that's not. Never a good combination. Yeah, um, I've also seen that twelve years ago and um, boy. That was awkward. That was bad. That really made me nervous because it was inside at a venue that really shouldn't have had fire to begin with. And the flames were definitely going up and hitting the ceiling, uh, which was definitely flammable. So it's a miracle that place didn't burn down. Um, so we really discourage anybody from performing indoors at all. Um, it's generally not. Permissible in Chicago. And we are hoping to work with um, you know, the city officials to. Make permitting and knowledge about fire performance again, more accessible so we can avoid incidents like that.
And we're hoping to uh, expand on our uh, level two training to be a little bit more. Um, uh, versatile in what it means to be a professional performer, what it means to do a lot of the permitting yourself. To be booking clients, uh, knowing what a safe venue looks like. Um, you know, as a professional performer, I've only had one distasteful. Cancellation and that was somebody getting married and was impatient and wouldn't have us perform outside, needed to be inside. We didn't get the permitting. When he wanted us to say we got it, you know, we would have been there to the day before and canceled day of. If needed to, um, you know, so. How to be strict and how to be um, you know, confident in what you're communicating and what um. Uh, what venues standards should be being upheld as well. Not just us as performers, but you know, making sure that the people around us are. Um, knowledgeable as well, those who aren't in our industry.
Yeah, no, we, 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 we know some stuff. So y'all should uh, come take our level two safety training. Uh, get more insight on how to be a professional fire spinner, um, and the legitimate way to do that in Chicago. Um, well, I don't.
Thank you so much.
Thank you BK. Yeah, so Cody says, I just wanna say I'm very excited about how it's expanding to other communities, particularly excited about Winna Mac because it's local. A lot of backlash about banning fireworks, but this is gonna be a good alternative. That's what we hopes. Um, we really hope, I mean. To be perfectly honest, a little nervous about uh, fireworks. And it's why we historically never hosted a full moon jam on the Fourth of July. Or anywhere near it, um, because we were worried about that. Um, fireworks obviously are a danger to everyone attending. And the fire performers, um, but it also puts our entire event at risk because if something does happen, then the fire marshal may say that it's our fault. Even if we had nothing to do with the firework. And then that would of course, end the jams. So. We are taking a bit of a risk hosting it this year, but we've been working with the alderman, with the Winna Mac um, PAC, Oregon, um, Advisory Council. And um, or reaching out to the um, the local police precinct. We've uh, established a good rapport with them. So we're hoping that, you know, our community will help um. Encourage people to party responsibly and um, not put each other at risk.
Um, please Cody, ask, you know, as somebody who's in that community, in that neighborhood. Please tell people about the event. P- please help us promote um, a sober, family-friendly event that. Does not encourage fireworks, does not encourage police officers and people shooting off their guns in celebration. Which has been one of the main concerns, uh, in why they want to change things up in hosting the full moon jam. Uh, by deterring people from sneaking into the park by having a public event. So yes. As Devin said, it is a risk, but everybody is aware of it. And the more promotion of good people and good intentions, the better the event will be.
Yeah, bring your sober friends. Uh, and if anyone here is interested in becoming a guardian, uh, taking fire safety. Even if you're not a performer, it's very helpful knowledge just to be able to know how to respond in an emergency. You'll know how to extinguish a, a living person that's on fire. You'll know how to extinguish a blazing fire that's just, you know, suddenly pops up next to you. So it's helpful knowledge. Guardian training also helps to provide insight on uh, conflict mediation, bystander intervention. Lots of uh, helpful tactics that are just useful every day, wherever you are, whatever you're doing. With being able to respond to an emergency or a dangerous individual, or just somebody who's making others uncomfortable and knowing how to deescalate the situation. So, yeah, let your friends know. And um, we will of course, be posting more updates online. Uh, we encourage anybody that has ideas on how to improve inclusion, diversity. Uh, and enhance our community engagement to reach out to us. Let us know what you'd like to see at the jams. Um, we, if anyone has any old fire props that they would like to donate, we would love to expand our prop library. Uh, if anyone knows of great discounts happening or places to get quality, cheap products that we can use for our education classes, let us know. Um, we are still exploring the idea of setting up a jam Patreon. Um, with videos maybe and references for DIY jams, documents, things like that. Um, we, we wanna make it really accessible to everybody. And that's always been our, our fundamental goal. So. Um, yeah, I think that's, that's pretty much it. That's all we have planned for twenty twenty-four and beyond. Um, thank you all for being here. Really looking forward to an amaz- another amazing, amazing year of full moon jam.
Much love. Thank you, the board. Thank you, everyone who attended. Uh, and deep in will, uh, when it comes to guardian training, uh, when we. Uh, have our sign up for our reserve jams, that will be an option. So keep, keep an eye on the newsletter.
Yep, reserve jams will also be guardian training. So yeah. Alright, everybody. We love you all and we hope to.
Have a good night.
At all the jam. At all the jams. Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. See you soon. Bye. Good night, Amber.
Oh, man. Robert, those plushies are too much.